You ready, Ray?
Yep. Everyone is currently being recorded.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start with the meeting information. The city council will hold a city council work session at 7:00 PM. In order to protect residents, staff, and elected officials due to the novel COVID-19 virus, this meeting will be held virtually. The city of Sweet Home Council is streaming the meeting via Microsoft Teams platform and asks the public to consider this option. There will be an opportunity for public input via live stream. To view the city council meeting live, visit live.sweethome.org.gov. If you don't have access to the internet, you can call 541-367-5128 and choose option number pound one to be logged into the call. This video stream and the call options are allowed under council rules, meet the requirements for Oregon Public Meeting Law, and has been approved by the mayor as chairperson of this meeting. All votes will be conducted by roll call. Call the Order of the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like everyone to cite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I ask for roll call.
Mayor Mahler.
Present.
Counselor Gerson.
Present.
Counselor Nash. Counselor Nash.
Counselor Nash is not attending.
Counselor Trask.
Here.
Counselor Goble.
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Gorley.
Here.
And Counselor Coleman.
Here.
Let the record show we have six present and one non-present, absent. Go ahead, Ray, and take it from there.
Yeah, so we'd like to thank everyone who's joining us this evening. For members of the public who would like to take part in tonight's meeting, we have some instruction to help in case you're new to using Microsoft Teams. Notice the icons in the upper right-hand corner. The second one from the left is a chat bubble icon. If you wish to be recognized by the mayor to speak, please choose the bubble icon to enter the meeting chat. It will appear on the right-hand side of your screen. In the chat, please enter your name, address, and phone number, followed by the topic you wish to discuss. If you wish to speak in the meeting, you can choose the hand icon. It's the equivalent of raising your hand. The chair or moderator will ask you to speak at the appropriate time. We're now going to take a few minutes and allow everyone to enter their name, address, phone number, and topic to address the council. We will ask, in the interest of time, that people not repeat a previous speaker. Instead, state you agree with their point or disagree with their point. We ask that you not repeat testimony given to the council. Those joining by phone will be noted by the moderator for the mayor. The fact the meeting is online does not excuse poor behavior, and the mayor does retain the right to have people removed from the meeting. And Mr. Goble has his hand up.
Counselor Goble, go ahead.
Counselor Nash, should we still make a vote, mark him absent or excused?
We could, yeah, we could go ahead. I think he's got to have to get up early in the morning for his job, so I think that's probably why he stepped away. So let's go ahead, and I need a motion in a second to approve his absence.
So move. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Let the record show we have six ayes with no nays with one absent, approval of his absence of this work session.
Okay. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, this Robert Snyder with the city attorney. Will you, when we come to the council next time, will you remember to bring this back up and so you guys can vote on it at that time?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
So Ray, did you want to take it off or do you want me to start it off? How do you want?
No, certainly. Happy, happy to take the lead here.
Okay.
I know there's, there's been a lot of concern over our local homeless population. And there's certainly been some questions related to what's being done and what people are seeing. So we just wanted to take some time and, and let the council know and anybody else in the public who might be interested what we're doing, why we've done it, what's guiding the actions we're taking, and then also talk about what we've accomplished over the past several months. We've got several, what I would refer to as wins, based upon the actions that the staff and the community have done and taken together. So first thing what I'd like to do, Mr. Mayor, is turn it over to Robert. And in the information you received, there are some court cases that dictate what we can and can't do, very clearly, actually. So I'd like to have Robert spend some time going on over those two cases and their findings, and Jeff will pipe in as well. And then we'll move on to what we've done locally and why we've done that. We have Pastor Bethany is here on, on the, on the meeting. I was gonna say on the call, but I believe she's logged in via computer. And she's a pastor of the Nazarene Church, and they've certainly played a large role in, in the work being done. The Nazarene Church and part of One Sweet Home and One Shelter. So if we can start with Robert first, he'll, he'll kind of kick it off and give you a quick overview of, of case law. And then we'll go to Jeff and Sean. And they may also choose to include, or your questions may also include Pastor Bethany's response as well.
Okay, just to address the council, this is Robert Snyder, city attorney. It's my understanding that we're here for the homeless persons to talk about that issue and that there are approximately 13 to 15 homeless people in Sweet Home that don't have a place to sleep at night. And Sean can go into further on that. But basically, for the, the cases that are involved, as we've explained before, in 2018, there was a Ninth Circuit case. I'll refer to it as Boise. And the Ninth Circuit is the federal court that has jurisdiction over Oregon, is why we look at it. The Eighth Amendment, the cruel and unusual punishment amendment to the Constitution, that a homeless person has a right to sleep, lie down, and sit on public property somewhere if he or she has no private property to use. That condenses it down, but basically that gives you the idea. And then in 2020, the Medford District Court, Federal District Court, and that's in Oregon, was deciding the Grants Pass case, is the way I refer to it as, since it deals with Grants Pass's ordinances on basically camping, using their parks, that sort of thing. And they agreed with the Boise case. And they did go on to say that the holding of this case does not say that Grants Pass must allow homeless camps to be set up at all times in public parks. This holding in no way dictates to a local government that it must provide sufficient shelters for the homeless or allow anyone who wishes to sit, lie, or sleep on the street at any time and at any place. They go on to basically say, and you've heard this before, the time, place, and manner regulation, that the city has that option to use time, place, and manner regulations to, to regulate these sort of activities of sleeping, sitting, and lying down in, in public places. And that the city, their rulings in these cases does not directly affect your other ordinances, which are, you know, for litter or, or urinating in a public place or obstructions of roads, that sort of thing. Those still are in play on the, for the cities to use in, in the regulations of these matters. The two cases, I'm assuming that everybody has read the judgment on the Grants Pass case. It was the judge's decision, actual decision on, on the Grants Pass case. And it, it regulated how the Grants Pass was going to use its parks, at least the way things were set up there. It had some time, places, and manner on how to do that. I'd referred to before a Salem ordinance that had come out because of these cases, regulating sitting and lying down on a public sidewalk. And it also has time, place, and manner regulations in it. One dealing with the nighttime in the parks and the other one dealing with daytime in the sidewalks and, and that sort of thing. So it shows you that there are ways of addressing this, some of the issues here in time, place, and manner regulations. The, right now, but I, right now, it is, is, we've been working on a, the chief and Sean have been working on a solution to address the issues on the homeless persons, issues that they have to face. And I'll turn it over to them to tell you what they have been doing since these rulings have come out and, and said that the cities basically have to look at this issue of how they are going to address, how they approach a homeless person's situation and afford them this right and still, you know, regulate the, the public property for the public in general. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this is Chief Lynn, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
Well, I could jump in. This is, the whole topic around homelessness isn't, isn't something unique to our community, as we all know, and it's such a broad topic, and it's difficult to even wrap our heads around at different times. But Mr. Snyder is absolutely right. Both the Boise ruling and the Grants Pass ruling have really changed how we have interacted with the homeless and the amount of influence we can have on them associated where they can sleep, sit, lie. And so that has affected how we have, even enforced some of the ordinances that we have on our books. And so one of the, the areas that when, specifically Boise, we started looking at this, but when Grants Pass came out was, is there an opportunity for, for a place to exist within our community for the homeless that they could congregate at night specifically? And that would allow us a little bit more latitude enforcing some of the other ordinances or gives us a little bit more ability to influence where the time, place, manner restrictions that we can have homeless sleeping in our community. That kind of is what has evolved into some of what's going on at the Nazarene Church. And how the Nazarene Church even came about is a little bit more complicated than that. And I know that Bethany Young is here. And so many of our questions that I've received from community members and concerns from businesses and neighbors in the area revolve around what's taking place at the Nazarene Church. If it's all right with you, Mr. Mayor, and if Bethany, Pastor Bethany's willing, I'd love her to kind of talk to what, how the Nazarene Church and what's going on there has kind of came into, came into being. I know that Pastor Bethany talked at the, our last meeting we held on the, the health committee meeting, I'm sorry, I drew a blank there. And so she enlightened a lot of those who attended that as far as what they're doing down there. And if it's all right with you, I'd like for Bethany to just kind of briefly go over what, how the Nazarene Church came to be what it is right now.
I like that. Pastor Bethany, if you can hear us, go ahead and take it from there.
Okay, do I need to turn my video on or just the mic okay? Can you hear me?
The mic is fine as far as I'm concerned, but it's up to the city manager if that's going to be suitable.
Either way, it's fine with me, I just wanted to know what you needed, so.
Go ahead.
So as far as how the church got involved is, as Chief Lynn said, it's kind of complicated. So One Sweet Home kind of launched a couple of years ago, the extreme weather shelter up at Furlan Lutheran. And last year, they approached me as could we have that extreme weather shelter in our church? And so we got involved in that program that way. And as we all know, COVID kind of came around at the end of that extreme weather piece. Actually, before we were going to close, so they had to shut the shelter down due to the shutdown and, and the volunteers and the requirements that were involved to be able to keep people safe. And so a couple of the homeless that were seeking refuge in that shelter, because it was still really cold and kind of nasty outside, stayed under our overhang with our building being closed. They asked if that would be okay for them to be there because it's a little bit warmer and drier. And at the time, we were like, it's fine, it's just going to be a few more days, right? You have to be up and gone during the day. You can crash here at night, we won't bother you, kind of a thing. And, and so that's where it kind of started. And then we were in like full shutdown. So we weren't meeting as a church, and there were two or three of them there, and it was fine. And over time, like they kind of just stuck around, sticking there. And then the street ministry team, Eastland Street Ministry or the FAC came in, and they were like, this is really great that they're right here, we can find them, can you work with us? And so we kind of had a conversation back and forth with, well, shelter in place, how is COVID going to look, would this be a good thing, would this not be a, would this be a bad thing? What do we want to do? And so those three or four were kind of sticking right there and had a conversation with Chief Lynn then, just to say, we don't want to be breaking any rules, we don't want to be crossing any lines of the city. I don't know what we need to do, they're here, this is what's happening, this is why. What should we do from here? And it's kind of evolved into this that's happening right now, which is not necessarily what our vision or our goal is. And we're working on a way to maybe make it more eye appealing from the street and more regulated and safer. Some of the things that have happened, like to get to this point we're at right now, is the fires in July happened. And somehow, somewhere in communication, the idea of tent during the smoke came up. And so tents started showing up. I don't know if the street team gave them, like, we did not hand them out. They just started showing up, they started kind of sticking in place that way. And so we kind of went out and said, okay, this is going to be okay during the smoke and this extreme weather, we've talked to the city. But you have to keep it picked up, there cannot be stuff or what looks like trash just kind of sprawled out everywhere. And we have, we, obviously, we've had times where it's really bad. And then like today, they have it all picked up and it looks pretty nice. Just trying to keep them collected and nice. And we're monitored, at that time, especially monitoring fire and smoking and that kind of stuff, making sure it was not in their tents, not on the grass, not where it could set a fire in town in some way. So just kind of working with them, getting them to get some ownership. Meanwhile, we've been working with some services. We've actually had a couple of the people that have showed up because they became houseless through this process, through COVID and, and fires. We've had a couple of people show up in their cars, and we've actually got them into temporary and transitional housing. So because they were in our location and the services were able to connect with them, they were able to move on and, and do some of those things. We actually, right now, are working with four of them to get them into transitional housing and get some of their services in place. We're working with them to get to their mental health and stuff like that. So it's kind of evolving into this bigger project. But then the conversation came up for extreme weather again because we're coming up into where we would open the shelter. And I sat in on a shelter meeting for all of Benton and Lynn County, where all the shelters came together. And Oregon Health Authority had some conversation in that piece with what their regulations and rules were going to be as far as what would be allowed in those temporary shelters. And there's some really difficult requirements to meet in a small community like this with volunteers and, and testing and space requirement. So we came against this idea that we would be able to house five or six, maybe, in those extreme weather days if we had the right volunteers. So I'm looking at going, we have 15, and we can only house five. So how are we going to do this and stay within the COVID guidelines? So we started having conversation like, what else can we do? We've got to figure out a way to keep them warm and dry through this weather. And so conversations started happening, and people started getting on board and this idea of kind of an Arctic camp, where we're creating this idea of a platform and tent and barrier to help keep them warm throughout the winter. And the conversation with Blair and Chief Lynn and Sean from the police department has been, okay, this is just for this extreme weather. Meanwhile, while we're working on this, once this is kind of settled and we can move forward through COVID and this extreme winter that we're going to be facing, however that looks, we will be working on some other plan or process with the city. And that's kind of where we're at right now is we're extreme weather shelter. So if, if it continues to move forward and stays this way, it's going to start to look different over the next week. We've been kind of waiting to make sure everything's cool before we just put a whole bunch of stuff in place and then end up having to tear it down. And then in, in that period of time, once that's kind of settled, then that gives us more time to continue to work with these resources. And we've researched like Safe Camping Corvallis and some of these other places that we're working towards. Okay, this is a better goal long-term, and it would be someplace not in the main corner of downtown Sweet Home as you're coming in to see it. So, but we're working, that's all like in the very beginning phases and stages and conversations and continuing to put resources and things in place to not be here forever and not be in this necessary area, especially around some of the businesses, but also to, you know, our biggest goal would be to get them off the street. But that's going to be a slow, long-term process, and so that's what we're working on right now.
Mr. Mayor, if I could interject as well, I know that so much of this is, there's been, it's not an ideal location or situation. I think everybody who is associated with it would agree to that. But having, having the homeless, the majority of the homeless together in, in one area has had some unintended advantages to it as well. I know the 13, I think what was really referring to is there, at any given night, there's probably 12 to 15, 16 homeless persons kind of staying at the Nazarene Church. There are a few, few others around our community that choose not to go there. But some of the unintended advantages, if it's, if it's okay for you, I'd like Sean Morgan, our community service officer, to kind of step in and talk about some of those efforts.
Okay, Sean, go ahead, if you don't mind.
All right, yeah, so, yeah, we've had a, we've had a bit of success here with, with these folks. I think prior to the summer, prior to June, I'm not sure how many were engaged in any forms of services that they need to try to, try to work their way into some kind of housing. A lot of them are dealing with addiction and especially mental health issues. They require some treatment and they require, you know, to, to meet with some services to, to try to work through those. Those are really obstacles to finding housing. At least 10 of those, probably about 10 of those are engaged in some, in some regular way with services to varying degrees of dedication at this point. There are a handful of them there, kind of, you know, they're, they're a little more transient, fade in and out. And maybe aren't, aren't so much. And that's worked really well in combination with the community court that we've just started off this year. Mental health is engaging Lynn County Alcohol and Drug, CSC, which works on housing directly. You know, and I just saw, just last week, a Lynn County health worker was over helping fill out eight applications for housing. I don't know whether that's going to pan out or not, but it's definitely something that, you know, they were able to do because they're there in one spot, we were able to find them and work with them directly. So we've had, you know, I've had one, one male who accrued 13 separate warrants on two charges throughout the last, I don't know, last year. He gets a warrant, doesn't show up to court, gets another warrant. He has been able to, I was able to get him to go to court, and I talked him into going to court. And he started connecting with services. And recently, he's, and he's, he stumbles here and there. But recently, he had a court date in Douglas County, and he missed it, couldn't get there. And rather than ignoring it, the next day, he, he walked down to the Sweet Home Police Department and turned himself in and got himself another court date, and he's talking about how he's going to get there. Again, he stumbles, but that's, that's a mindset that he didn't have before. And that's kind of some of the success we're seeing there. Bethany mentioned the two folks who came down, they were recently, they, they were, they, they were made homeless during this, you know, early in this summer, this COVID period. And it was a matter of days before they were, they were connected to a resource to get them into some housing. There's a veteran out there right now who is working with the VA, and I'm hoping that he's going to be in a house by, you know, sometime in January. So those are some of the successes we're seeing out there. They stumble, they, you know, it's, it's tough for them to, to get into these meetings and make it work. But they're trying and they're, and, and we're seeing some success. And I've got another one who's done everything anyone has asked of him. And he's, he's applied for work, he's applying for disability, looking for an income. And at some point, you know, some housing, he's really, you know, just in a waiting game right now. So those are some of the successes we've seen with these folks. It's really been pretty cool to watch.
Sounds good. I know as a council, we, somebody wanted to pipe in?
Mr. Mayor, this is Beth Lambert.
Hi, Beth, go ahead.
I don't mean to be a wet blanket or a naysayer, but, and I'm very happy for the successes that you speak of. Unfortunately, I sit and watch it every day, all day. These are not rule followers. They show up looking in my windows. They are disrupting my business, my renters' business, the beauty shop. And they, Sean and Bethany are doing, trying to do amazing things with these people who are not rule followers. They still are in my room and looking in my windows. And I'm, I don't mean to be a naysayer, but the devaluing of my property, the effects on my business when I have someone sitting in my office and these freaky people, sorry, but they do yell outside my windows affects business. You speak of that we need to give them a place on public property, but this is not public property, this is private property. And it's in my backyard, and it's affecting my business. And somebody needs to care about that. And I'm, anyway.
Thanks, Beth.
That's it.
I have been bombarded with a lot of complaints, Jeff, and Beth is one of many. I'm just, I can reiterate the same complaints that she just expressed. As a council, we discussed that we did not want to establish homeless shelters. However, we did address the fact that we have to find a solution to the problem. And we do have a problem. And I'm all for warming shelters and helping out. But again, one of the council goals is to try to And I'm all for warming shelters and helping out. Um, but again, one of the council goals is to try to work on our downtown corridor and you know, clean up our present, our presence of coming and going within our community. And then as you come into Sweet Home, you you see an eyesore, we just added to everything else. And that's one of the complaints that has been brought to my attention more and more over and over. Um, you know, eh we brought this topic of homeless to the ad hoc committee. And, you know, we 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 discuss some solutions. And one of the things that uh that I mentioned is to take a look at, in my opinion, is the somewhat of a success story is in Eugene, I keep bringing up is the mission, the women's and the men's mission in Eugene. Um, I think it's been done very well. Um, you you stand outside and look at the missions there in Eugene. It looks clean, it's organized, I don't see any issues, it's managed well, it's properly being handled. When you go inside the mission, you have a church, a small little church established, you have a cafeteria, you have a housing fac- uh place with bunks. Um, you you have a social gathering area, of course, with the COVID that brings a struggle here, I understand. But to me, it seems to be working. And I know that, you know, I brought that up to us to take a look at that and and see if we can possibly do something similar to that. But I agree with Beth, we've kind of created a uh two-headed monster with what's going on. And I know we're trying to help. Um, and I'm for trying to get help people during the winter time with the warming shelters. So I know was one thing was brought to my attention today and I can't volunteer at other facilities. But one person brought up a point of the empty church on Long Street, it's a huge church. That as far as I know, it's totally empty, there's no one in it, it's got plenty of room to house. Um, folks, I don't know if that's an option or not, but I think we need to address some of our options and address this issue. Um, so at this time, I'd like to open it up to some of the councils and their thoughts. Any city council have any uh topic you want to talk about?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Goldman.
You know, I I I like the fact that everybody's trying to help out too, and we do need to do it, but for four and a half years, we made it very clear because of the business and the community members in in the in all the residents did not want a homeless shelter or a homeless camp. You know, some did and some some gave up land and said they could do it here, uh but some of the churches in town wanted to do it. And each time it came through, they were told no. And the thing that bothers me is we're taking a warming center facility and it's just migrating right there in front of us into a homeless shelter and into a homeless camp. And that's that's what bothers me because it's just like it's happening and we're not doing anything about it. And one, it is on private property. And on private property has a whole bunch of set of different rules compared to public property. And I I it's the goose in the gander. I mean, if it's going to be good for them, then anybody can just slowly start something up and move on, do the same thing too. And there's been a lot of complaints about it. But on the other hand, I agree, there is no perfect answer right now because we have to help all community members, whether that's homeless or people with homes. That's all I have.
Well, and in best case, you know, here we're trying to keep what little businesses we have left because of the COVID situation. I'd hate to see other businesses close up because of problems that occurred elsewhere. So I don't have a perfect solution to the problem either, but I, we need to figure out a solution so that we can move forward and and make everybody work in harmony with this problem.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I I uh I'd like to talk to you uh about the uh comments that uh were made about the the building right there by the uh uh by the church. Uh, I get my haircut there. And the last time I was there, there was four people that walked right by that building with soda pop can uh things in their hands and all that stuff. And I don't think they should be able to do that uh because it hurts their business. And a- and another thing that bothers me is is the first thing you see when you come into highway, on Highway two twenty eight, when you get into basically down by the city uh before you get to Highway twenty, that's what you see. Um, and that that I that disturbs me. I I don't think it's eh and I understand we need to do something. I don't know what that is right now. Uh, but it 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 doesn't look good on our city when we're trying to get people to come to our city and and they see that. I, you know, and it's not only here, I get that. But I don't see a lot of that stuff on Main Street in Lebanon, you know, so I'm just, I I don't know what the answer is, but it it concerns me that that it makes our city look bad.
So, Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
Counselor, listen.
Jeff, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I have a question. Um, so when One Sweet Home decided to build these shelters, were was the city consulted? Were you or Sean or anyone in the city consulted about those shelters?
They're not actually shelters that um they were constructing. They were basically a platform. But there are two sections of I the size is is you have to give me, but they're like two sections of four by fours that go together where a tent was set on top of those. It's simply designed to um keep the tents directly off of the ground. So it's not an actual shelter, it's just uh uh platforms that could be moved here or there.
Okay, did I hear though that they were going, looking to put like a tarp or something over them?
I'll have to ask, have uh Pastor Bethany respond to that.
So essentially what it is, is a platform to lift them off the ground to keep them from getting so wet. And then the tent and then a tarp over the tent just to protect them moisture because we live in the Pacific Northwest. So it creates a barrier to help keep them warmer. Um, the idea is to get it down. So if if it's like twenty or below um that they can stay warm enough, they don't freeze to death outside.
Okay, thank you. So I guess my question is then, were you, was anyone consulted about those or did was it just taken upon the group to build those?
Well, we knew they were uh, it was being undertaken, or I knew it was being undertaken. I can't vouch for the rest of the city.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Coleman.
So this is always a difficult discussion because we do need to um care for our citizens. And our citizens include those, as Counselor Golba said, those that have homes and those that do not and business owners. So um it's a challenging conversation and it does, it's not, um, it is kind of an eyesore for our community, but I think what would also be really bad for our community if somebody died living, sleeping outside inside Sweet Home City limits. Um, so I think that we do need to work on a solution. But I wonder what kind of temporary solution we can provide so that when this cold weather, because the temperatures keep dropping, um, what we can do to make sure that we don't have anybody who dies from sleeping outside. And that hasn't happened yet, but it ha- here in Sweet Home, but it has happened in other communities. So, and that sounds drastic, but at the same time, um, is there something we can do for here and now and then come up with a long-term solution or maybe a different solution? Um, because we do need to protect all of our citizens, including people like Beth who are struggling with her business right now. So um I just, that's, those are my thoughts.
Well, that was one, that's one of the questions I had, Coleman. Uh, Counselor Coleman was, you know, I brought up one facility that's totally empty. That's off the beaten path, that's somewhat of an isolated facility. I can't volunteer that facility, obviously, because I don't own it and somebody owns it. But I mean, that's, I see a lot of facilities in Sweet Home and I I kind of wonder why we may approach them and see if we can't work out a temporary solution to get them into a somewhat of a warming shelter, but off the visible path and away from some of the businesses. I, I'm open to suggestions and ideas. Counselor Goldman.
Wow, you were faster than I was on that one. Um, um, I just lost my train of thought. But what, what uh liability does the city have if we're going to be involved in some fashion of helping this and we help that, you know, the church or whoever get going and we're involved in this and something does potentially happen? What liability would the city actually have on that for repercussions from other family members and things like that?
Good question.
Well, I think anytime the city is involved in any endeavor, no matter what it is, um, it's well-known that that we have uh insurance. Um, oftentimes, whether we are negligent or not negligent, we are going to be named in a lawsuit regardless of the topic, whether it's a um, an issue with 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 our police department or um an issue in our library or an issue out in one of our parks or an issue right in front of City Hall or inside City Hall. Um, there are, eh, we are probably going to be named in any lawsuits um in in an effort to recover losses. So um, I I I think our our liability is certainly the more we're involved, the more potential we have for liability.
That brings up the question raised, and I, this may have been over an exaggeration, but a city official helping build some of these shelters or help building a set place for someone to stay. Does that, that opens up a can of worms and possible liability on the city's part. That's why one of that, that topic has been brought up.
Yeah, we we have been very careful as city staff regarding our involvement. Um, we have been limited insofar as um uh Sean's involvement has has been strictly uh ri- been restricted to providing and connecting homeless individuals with services. Um, to my knowledge and and uh staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but we haven't been directly involved with any of the physical um work uh involved in any of this. Um, eh, what we have done is as a result of of Boise and and of the Medford case, uh, we have certainly pointed people out to that location. Um, so if you, if you you know, if you notice, one of the positives out of this is we don't have the numbers of people in parks that are staying in parks, they're not sleeping downtown in other areas. Uh, and we can, we can do that because we have a place for them to go. Um, eh, and again, it's an accidental location. It's a uh, it's not a a, it's certainly not a permanent location, but just at the time everything happened, when COVID broke out and whatnot, that's where that's where they could go. And and throughout this process, that's where um, that's where they've been able to stay and and where we've been able to connect them with resources related both to their struggles to escape homelessness and the causes of their homelessness. Um, but also COVID-related as well. It's it's, I know that healthcare providers have been um enthusiastic over the fact that we have them all in one location, we have homeless people in one location, so.
Uh, Counselor Gory, I know your hand's been up for a long time, so I hope it doesn't fall down.
It probably won't, it probably won't. So One Sweet Home is a committee that already meets on this particular issue. When they meet, um would we, if they focused on long-term solutions and had a city representative there and possibly other entities that um can provide resources um and bring some options forward that partnerships could help resolve and create some long-term solutions to helping people transition back into housing. And and we've had these conversations. We didn't look at what long-term can we do for these people because being behind a church or in front of a church in a tent um isn't, isn't ideal. And I think everybody's recognizing that. But as, when we sit down with the city council meeting, we're given options. And I think it would be nice to to flesh out this particular subject and what we can do to make a difference here for everybody in the community. And I I think we're going to get there, but I think as a council, it would be nice to hear um some options of what we could do, like the church you brought up, you know, do we know who owns that? Do we know what that would cost? Do we know if that was a viable answer or not? Um, what it, what's going on here? And um, do we need a fence to help the Nazarene Church? What is it that can make this better for now? And then long-term, I don't, it was just, I was thinking about that and I, it'd be nice to hear some long-term choices.
Well, Counselor Gory, I know in in one of the ad hoc meetings, we talked about more churches being involved and instead of having one church take on the whole burden. Um, I know for Sweet Home, we have the most churches per capita in either city in the state of Oregon. Um, so why isn't other churches not stepping up? Has that been approached? You know, share the wealth, so to speak, of the problem and see what we can do for the solution.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a clarifying question on that point?
Yeah, go ahead.
What type of help do you envision other churches providing? Um, location for, um, tents to be or finances or what type of help are you envisioning?
Various services. Eh eh, it may, they may help them get to meetings, you know, maybe a pastor helps, takes on one homeless. I mean, they don't have to take on the fifteen you talked about, but let's say one church takes on one homeless, the next church takes on another homeless and so forth. I don't remember what the number of churches in our community are, but I know it's a, it's a huge amount of churches. And that topic came up in that hawk is getting all the pastors together and having a meeting with all the pastors and seeing we can't come up with a solution to this problem. And maybe they had better s- a better idea of how do we can disperse and help these people with, you know, mental health services to, you know, a lot of them is just getting to their, like Sean talked about, getting to courts and in making their meetings with their, with whatever, I mean, or their doctors. Um, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of these homeless don't have transportation. And one topic came up of how to get them to their doctor, was like I mentioned. So I don't, uh, Counselor Gory, you can probably, you know, share a little more on that because that topic key did come up.
I think it's Sean that um has worked on trying to get that available. There was um a police vehicle that was donated for helping move the people forward to where they can get to these appointments. Because people being able to get to their medication and stuff is a huge issue. But we need to figure out a way to find a location because homelessness isn't going to go away. It's always been here. And um we just need to be able to do it in a way that makes everybody comfortable. I don't think anybody wants to live in a tent in a ditch by the highway. And so I think we can um we can find something and we just need to go towards that means and put the right people in the right room and make that the goal, you know.
Mr. Mayor, um, just to clarify, and I'll probably ask, I see Bethany's hand is raised, but
Yeah.
to speak into this. One Sweet Home is made up of um a number of churches joining together to try and solve some problems like this. I think um COVID has restricted their their movement forward as far as what they can do as far as um people being able to assist in different ways. But just so you know, that is a group of multiple churches wanting to work together. And um I think they'd be open to meetings that with city officials. I know that um Bethany can speak more into this, so I'm just going to let her share.
Yeah, that's to my point, Counselor Coleman. I know that was the topic of discussion and I agree with that. So uh Pastor Bethany.
I was just going to speak into it, uh Counselor Gory and Coleman were talking about. Um, one of the one shelter meetings has had a representative from the city present and been able to give us some direction as far as ordinances and things like that. And some of the process to help present to you guys. So that is part of what we are working on. We were just working on the crisis of cold weather first. So um there is research into other buildings, other locations, other um viable options, um multiple church locations. Um, we're looking into micro shelters, which is um kind of taking flight in Corvallis successfully. Um, I've gathered a guideline. I've gathered guidelines and ideas and processes and requirements and some of the things that they do, as well as kind of this hub idea of where services can all come together. Like mental health, medical even possibly, so that we don't necessarily have to transport them, but their services are coming to that hub so that they can get to where they are safely already. And addressing some of those issues like Ms. Lambert brought up as well, trying to eliminate them being around the businesses, causing stress within that, that community. And we acknowledge that what's happening right now is not the best benefit. It's not what we wanted to see happening, it's not the direction we were planning to go at all. It's kind of happened in a crisis situation where we are out of resources. We can't just call in 90 volunteers to work round the clock to watch these guys in a building. We, with the COVID piece of it and a population of 9,000, you don't, we don't have that kind of manpower. So that's, it's some of the different issues that we've been addressing and looking at and trying to figure out. You know, would a fence work? It is private property, do we need to be in a public property situation? Do we need to find a location that's outside of communities? Because if you move to that church up on Long Street, you're right across from a school, you're close by to several residential. So, you know, questions like that, that you're addressing and wanting to make sure that everybody's safe. Nobody's in schools right now, I get that for the season, it might be an option. The Hope Center is sitting empty right now, so figuring out what that board is doing, trying to work with them. There's a couple of pieces of property around town that are maybe public, maybe not. We're kind of researching and what does that look like? So we're, we're working on that. Counselor Gorley, just to try to address some of those things and be able to present to you, we just were running out of time, is what it comes down to. There's not enough hours in, in day to problem solve through all the things that are happening in at one time. And so we're trying to manage the crisis and work towards a better solution as we're moving forward. And that's why we were very, very strictly, very concretely saying, there is a deadline. This is just temporary, it will end. And that's why it, like the platforms are, are movable and separate, so we can move them to someplace else, do something else with them. It's kind of the idea behind it is to not have a permanency and to create something that looks better, is safer maybe in the long-term and just in the immediate emergent kind of state.
Sounds good, Bethany. Ray, where, where do we go from here as far as your thoughts? Oh, Blair raised his hand, just a second, Ray. Go ahead, Blair.
Yeah, I just wanted to share a few things from a, I guess, an economic development perspective. And some of the things that I've noticed since this encampment has, has really started. We have, we have noticed that because people are congregating in this area at the Nazarene Church, they're not congregating in other areas. And so what is a detriment to one business is actually a boon to other businesses because you're, it's, it's changed the, the movement of people. And so one thing I think that's important to think about is legally, what, what Robert explained about the Boise case is that when it comes to our public right-of-way, we can't enforce some of the rules that we would like to enforce on that public right-of-way if people have nowhere else to go. And so there is a very large economic benefit to having a place for people to go because it makes it so that you can, we can enforce the ordinances that we've talked about when it comes to cleaning up downtown. The big problem, of course, is where, where is that location? And I understand what Bethany's saying about a crisis situation and certainly that should be the, their, their focus right now. But long-term, finding a location where we can say, okay, here is a place where you can get access to services and where you can find some shelter for the night. And what that looks like, I don't know if that's a building, I don't know if it's a place where people can camp in their vehicles or whether it's a place with platforms or micro shelters, whatever. There is a benefit to having a place like that because it means that the city is free to enforce our other ordinances and, and make downtown what we want it to be. And so I just wanted to, to kind of put my two cents in there. I see a lot of value to having a, a location that is set aside where certain, special rules apply to handle this issue. But, and, and so I would, I would encourage us to continue looking for that location. I worry about trying to split this into multiple locations because one of the hardest things about homelessness is that we can't control people very well. People still have rights and one of the great things about this, how, how this has developed is that we're able to access somebody, these folks that need services and be able to get them connected. There's a benefit to having that location. If you split it up into multiple locations, I worry that that benefit will be lost and that there'll be lost communication among those who need the services, knowing where they can actually find shelter, because you don't want people to get into one location and be saying, oh, we're full here, you got to go to these other places, it makes it more complicated. One location does help. But I think that if we can find something that is a bit more hidden, but findable by those who need it and, and accessible by the, the various services that are available, I think that has a lot of benefits to our downtown.
Well, Blair, I agree with the one location. I was talking about different churches or different help because of the COVID situation. I've been told because of the COVID situation, we can't congregate them all in one area. And that's, that's our challenge. But I think listening to a lot of the businesses and residents in the area, I think we need to make it a short-term goal, not a long-term goal of fixing this problem somewhere in our community. Because like I said, the last thing I want to see is either people moving out because of the problem or businesses closing up because they can't, because of the situation. So I don't know if you agree with me, Ray, on that, but I think we need to address this in, you know, short-term, not long-term for our location.
Yeah, part, part of the challenge is that in the case law, there are some requirements to where you have that space, if I, if I recall correctly. The, the spaces have, you can't, it can't be, you know, on the fringe, it's got to be where it's accessible. Where homeless can still have access to, to amenities that they, that they may need. So it kind of puts you in a, in a little bit of a bind as far as what is a reasonable distance. And so that is one of the things that we struggle with, that we're struggling with is we try to identify a more permanent location. But it is something that we're currently working on and we will continue to work on in identifying a better suited location for all of this, certainly. Some of that's in our control, some of that's not in our control. Again, we're, as we're working with One Sweet Home and Pastor Bethany, we're certainly attempting also to be cognizant of what's been the council's consensus over the past these four years since I've been here, and that is limiting our involvement in order to avoid liability. And also just from, from a, a resource stance, we don't really have the people to do this full-time and we don't have those resources to devote like larger cities do or the, the fundings to, to give grants out to, to other organizations like, like the Nazarene Church. We, but we still need to support and help these volunteers as they work through this problem. And so we're really trying to strike that balance of being supportive, but not necessarily taking the reins. And, and we'll continue to do that unless consensus of the council is to do otherwise. So we'll continue to work with these groups and with these organizations and with these volunteers and we will certainly attempt to find a, a solution in, in the shortest timeframe as possible.
So where do you want to go from here, Ray, as far as moving forward?
You know, again, this was just a work session. All we're, all we wanted to do was, again, because many or several of the council have, have communicated openly with me about their concerns and the concerns that they're hearing from, from the members of our community. We just wanted to make sure we put information out there of what we know and, and what we're doing and why we're doing it. And at this point, we'll continue along that path of, of finding a better location. I, I just, I do think it's really important that we note the success that Sean and One Sweet Home have had with some of their, some of our unhoused populations and helping them get into housing and helping them deal with some of the, the struggles that they face on a daily basis that is the cause of their, their homelessness. And, and that's important to do. So we'll just continue to move forward unless council gives us direction. Otherwise, we're, we're just going to try and find a better location and try to continue to connect people and, and resources, both volunteers and, and I'll use the term clients who need those resources. So we, we will do as the council wishes.
Can I, this is Beth Lambert, can I just interject one, a couple more things?
Sure, Beth, go ahead.
Okay, um, and again, I hate to be the person that throws wet blanket. Having them all in one place is a great thing, also for the drug dealers. They seem to be the ones circling and also some of the biggest rural not followers. Bethany knows that, I think firsthand. These men wear skinny jeans, have backpacks and eyeglasses, I don't think so much. So they also circle the camps daily. So there's that. And then let me just, just throwing this out there, I know it has been mentioned numerous times about trying to save the liability of the city. And I, I know a lot about liability. This is public property or private property and the city is waiving every code violation and ordinance in the history of everything I've seen in the last 21 years of living in this city. No one, I, I've never seen people be able to live in their yards, whether it's in a trailer or a tent. So the city condoning this is going to be assuming some liability if something happens over there, I would imagine. And so I wouldn't, I would hope that you guys are not thinking that you are liability-free from if somebody dies or something happens over there, a fire starts. I don't know what could possibly happen, but the city condoning this has got to be assuming some liability on that. Just my two cents.
Thanks, Beth. Any other comments regarding this?
Mr. Mayor, I, I just have one question for Chief Lynn.
Yeah, go ahead.
Are, are there any steps that Beth can take to help her with people around her business in the meantime, while, while we're looking for a better solution to this issue?
Absolutely, anytime, you know, Beth's property is her, her private property. So any individuals on that property, if it can be trespassed from there, criminally trespassed. I know there has been, and I haven't been by there in the last two day, or last day, somewhat of a fence, temporary fence went up to try to keep people off of, separated from the two properties. But anybody who's, who's on that property can be trespassed. It's just, it's not ideal for Beth either, having to call in and, and anytime somebody's on her property and to have them trespassed.
Okay. Counselor Gorley, is this topic, go ahead.
Oh, I said, we would be more afraid of retaliation.
No, I have to agree with that. Counselor Gorley, is this topic still on the ad hoc agenda?
We, we haven't been because of COVID and the fires and everything. We've been discussing mental health in our community quite a bit and we have a couple of people working on that particular issue. But it could come back to the forefront, yes. We could, we're meeting this month and we can make it the topic of the month. I think, I think there are solutions out there, we just have to figure out what they are, find out who, who we can count on for support on these things and find a better solution. It's a better long-term solution for everybody involved.
I think we need, yeah, I think we need to bring that to, back to the ad hoc and further discussion.
Okay, thank you.
So any other comments, feedback? Well, Pastor Bethany, I thank you, I appreciate your efforts. You know, we just need to keep, and I appreciate the, you know, Jeff and Sean and everybody that's been involved. I know that we're trying feverishly, trying to solve this problem, find a solution. And we just need to keep working forward, but Beth does have a point. We need to probably put some sense of urgency in finding a better solution or a location for these folks. Because it doesn't sound like it's working on one side, it is working on another. But anyway, thank you for all attending. Any feedback, any other questions, any other concerns? Please address them with our city manager, Ray Towery. And I appreciate everybody attending this evening and your feedback. And everybody be safe and thanks for attending this evening. Have a good evening.
Mr. Mayor, you did get a hand up there right at the end.
I did, okay. Larry, go ahead.
All right, can you hear me?
Yeah, go ahead, Larry.
Okay, I, I guess my question is, I know that Bethany has approximately 12 to 15 people in her backyard right now. And I just looked at the weather forecast, the weather forecast is in the 30s all week long. Are those people going to be allowed to stay there for at least the rest of this week? Who is going to be responsible for finding this alternative site? I think everyone agrees that we would love to find an alternative site. The advantage of the Nazarene Church for the homeless people is that there is a shower there, there's laundry there and a little bit of camaraderie between all of them. So I guess my question is, who's going to find this, this ideal spot or this spot where we can do a better job of serving these people without interfering with the businesses and the, the people in our community that, you know, are negatively impacted by them? And how, is there a timeframe on making this happen? Winter is here. I know I got involved about a month and a half ago because I, I wanted to do something before it got cold. Well, it's cold, it's freezing. Every day I get up and my water troughs for my animals are frozen. Well, and every morning I think, my gosh, these poor people that are living over there, what can we do to help them? I agree with Beth Lambert, I, they need, there needs to be another place. And if public land is, is the, the law, then why aren't we finding a, a public land location that we can put up 15 shelters so that these people can make it through until the spring? And I, it would be wonderful to have a home for these people, but we don't. So I just want to know who's going to be responsible and what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as finding an alternative?
I don't think we really have a timeframe that's been established this evening, but I think we, we, we were discussing mainly, mainly a sense of urgency to find a place. And we were talking about, you know, there's a lot of empty facilities in Sweet Home and maybe somebody will step up and allow them to use it, I don't know. That's why I was saying, we bring this back to ad hoc committee and see if they can't bring this topic up and bring a sense of urgency to help them out. I agree with you, Mr. Horton, it's, it's getting cold out there at evenings and it's living in tents, they're going to free- I agree with you, Mr. Horton. It's, it's getting cold out there at evenings and it's living in tents. They're going to freeze to death. And Beth's right, we got some liability on the city's part. That's a kind of concern. So we, we will have to find a, a solution to the problem and fairly sooner than later.
Well, I, you know, in the past, our community, Greg, has always worked together to come up with solutions. Always. And this is one that we've known about for a long time and it's time to make it happen. Whether that's a, a camp somewhere or it's a facility somewhere, we need to make it happen. And if there's anything that I can do or my friends can do to help, we are willing to chip in and make it happen. The platforms, we helped build the platforms. We were hoping to get those people off the ground. I really don't see, I don't know, I would like to see them put up until we find a alternative location. I'd like to see those platforms put up now so that they can get off the ground. And in the meantime, maybe that will help us run a little faster to finding a location.
I agree with that. So Counselor Gorley, is that feasible to bring this up at, at ad hoc and see what we can do?
Let's make it our priority conversation. And Larry, when we're done with the signs tomorrow, let's talk, okay? As we've spoken, I've had an idea, but we need to talk to a business owner, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Thank all of you. I know it's a tough, a tough thing to do, but we got to find a solution.
I agree with that. Any other questions, any other feedback or anything else anybody would like to bring up? Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and adjourn this meeting at 8:15. Thanks everyone. Be safe. Take care.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.